If everybody would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to make everyone aware that we did have an executive session, both on January 18th and earlier this evening, to discuss matters of personnel and legal issues. We're going to start off a little unusually with a couple of announcements, mostly because I really want to get out there because people are very interested in this topic. At the next Board of Commissioners meeting on February 12th, we will be evaluating the Parks and Recreation Board recommendations regarding dogs at the Skunk Hollow Park. And I just want to put that out there because they've been very well-attended meetings when this issue comes up and make sure everyone knows. And then we have a second announcement. Mr. White, you want to take that one?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. For the 12th consecutive year, the Radnor Township Finance Department has been recognized by the Governmental Finance Officers Association by earning their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Their certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and as such represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Tate and Amy Lacy, who is not here. Bob is our Finance Director and Amy is our Assistant Finance Director. The two of them oversee this annual process. It makes it sound like we only do it for a short window of time, but really this includes, you know, adherence to the governmental accounting standards, boards, pronouncements, which dictate how governmental accounting transactions are to be treated. The daily oversight of critical accounting and internal control functions. Safeguarding the assets of Radnor Township, both financial and physical. And doing all of this in concert with all of our departments who are active participants since we are all processing these transactions together. And at the end, it all culminates with cooperating with our independent auditing firm that comes in and takes a look at all of these different layers of what it is the Finance Department is doing and making sure we are compliant in all of these, all of the different areas. So for the 12th year, I'd just like to recognize Mr. Tate and the Finance Department for their leadership in this, as well as all of the township departments for taking this seriously and earning the Certificate of Achievement. So we don't have any flashy awards. It's a sticker that goes on the back of the wall, but... Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you very much. It's truly a team effort. And I want to give thanks to my entire Finance Department and especially Amy in spearheading this effort. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Tate, and Amy as well. I went on ahead pretty quickly there, but Commissioner Abel had a question about my first announcement about dogs and leashes.
Appreciate it. Can we just explain what the plan process is at this point? So we have, we'll hear the recommendations on February 12th. Is there a planned vote that evening? Are we just hearing from, are we just taking the recommendations and then hearing from our neighbors and then we'll have a vote or make some sort of decision later on?
There has been a recommendation that has been put forward from Parks and Recreation with a specific plan about this issue. Tammy Cohen has sent that out. You should have gotten it at the end of last week, I think.
Yeah, can we just, can we just announce-
I'm in the process of reporting it to all of you as well.
Can we just announce what that recommendation is from the Parks Board?
So in essence, this would be an ordinance change. So I know I've been working with Mr. Rice to develop the ordinance. So on February 12th, there would be the potential for an introduction of an ordinance that essentially would require dogs to be on leashes in the Skunk Hollow Trails, in Skunk Hollow Park specifically, on Saturdays, Sundays, and on all township holidays from 12 o'clock noon till the parks closing, which is generally dusk. So that, in essence, was the recommendation that was put forth by the Parks and Recreation Board. So on February 12th, there would be that potential for introduction of the ordinance and then subsequently after advertisement would come back potentially for adoption on February 26th. The only slight change that there was to what the Parks and Rec Board put forth is rather than evaluate this change, you know, in ordinance in two years, I think the change would be to evaluate it in one year to see how things are going.
Okay, thank you.
No mic. Okay, I want to open the floor for public participation. People will have a turn to comment on any specific item on the agenda as it comes up, but if you have something that's either not on the agenda or that you just want to talk about, you can have five minutes for public participation. No takers. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a, well, is there any item on the consent agenda that any of the Commissioners would like to pull?
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll start with item K, which is a motion to approve. There was a rejection of a single bid received for the electric vehicle charging station installation, contract hashtag B23-009, due to cost and authorization to re-advertise for sealed bids for the project. Can I have a motion? And a second? Mr. Northini, you want to start us off on this?
Thank you, Commissioner, but you put it forth well. We only received one bid. Staff was not comfortable with those, with that single bid. So we'd like to put it out again in the hopes of having a more competitive bid environment.
Steve, appreciate that. Two questions. The charging stations, where would they be located?
So they're going to be in the lower lot outside the police entrance exit. And they would be for existing police vehicles and future police vehicles. And infrastructure will be in place for further expansion as it is needed.
I apologize, Madam President. If I could just jump, it'd be for any township electric vehicle, not just those associated with the Police Department, which is, we're starting with police, but we have other departments where that could expand to in the future.
Any thoughts about putting a charging station in one of our parking lots for neighbors to use?
Definitely that would be something to look at in the future. And I've been working with Mr. Tate. He's heavily involved in this. I will say, we were ahead of our, we were ahead of the times. We had one in the North Wayne Lot for years. And when the lease came due, the company didn't want it anymore. But I think we were just a little ahead of the curve now. Something like that might be welcome.
Okay. But if we do, if we do decide to go down that road, you know, we have a potential plan in front of us where we would take over a new parking lot, you know, that would, we would wait till we make a decision on that, on that plan because I think that would be an ideal location for a couple of stations.
Jake, do you mean in addition to this one for the police?
In addition.
Okay.
But here at the Township building, you mean?
Right.
The charging stations?
Yeah.
No, no, I think, I think-
Or spread them around the parking, yeah.
I think the ones that we're talking about for the police and township vehicles. But I also think there's opportunities for putting them at parking lots throughout the community.
Madam President, just real quick on that, just, the bids that we're rejecting here were specific to a grant application that the township applied for and received last year. So we're executing on that grant right now. There will be opportunities to expand down the road. I just didn't, I want to make sure we weren't confusing the two issues. Right now, it's, we have a specific grant application for this building. We already took delivery of two electronic vehicles, so they're, we're able to charge them. We were able to put a temporary charging plug in for those two until we get these installed. But this is all grant-funded and is specific to this site right now. As we, as the conversation expands in future years, we'll have opportunities to expand with it.
Thanks for the clarification. Is there any public participation on this topic? Okay, then can I have a, well, we have a motion and a second. Can I take a vote? All in favor? Aye. I'm talking myself. Okay, we'll go back to the regular consent agenda. No other items people would like to pull off? Great. Is there any public comment on anything else on the consent agenda? Any Commissioner comment? Can I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Is it moved?
And a second? And let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. It's double-sided. Okay. Moving on to the business agenda. Item A is Resolution 2024-19, Preliminary/Final Land Development Plan Approval for Eastern University Workman Hall. Can I have a motion?
Is it moved?
And a second? Thank you.
So Madam Chair, so the applicants here just wanted to let the board know they are asking for a waiver of final. They want to go for preliminary final approval. And staff feels they are, this project is a good candidate for that.
Thank you, Mr. Northini. Go ahead, Mr. Caniglia.
Evening. Nick Caniglia representing the applicant, Eastern University, on this matter. You had previously seen this matter in caucus. It's requesting preliminary final land development, as Steve had mentioned. It's in addition to an existing hall, Workman Hall. Workman Hall is located across from Cabrini, out by Eagle Road. Workman Hall is used for Music and Honors Program and is the modernization of that program to existing facilities. Two waivers are requested, the preliminary final waiver, as well as the 500 feet, utilities within 500 feet. We do have aerials showing where all the utilities are located. It did receive unanimous approval from the Planning Commission, recommendation for approval, as well as recommendation for approval of the waivers. All conditions in the review letters are acceptable to the applicant. The applicant's already received approval from Shade Tree Design Review Board and have received their sewer modules, my understanding is, as well. There was two zoning issues that were resolved. One was parking and one was man-made steep slopes. Zoning Board granted approval for both of those. So we're here this evening requesting preliminary final land development approval for the project.
Any Commissioner comments? Questions? Any public comment or questions? All right, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item B is Resolution 2024-06. Radnor Township Police Department wishes to purchase and enter into a new agreement with the USDA for whitetail deer and Canadian geese management in the amount of $70,771.95. Can I have a motion?
Emphatically moved.
And a second. An emphatic second.
Second.
Okay. Oh, well, okay. I was going to let Mike start us off and then maybe we can ask, because they may answer our questions just in presentation. Mr. Merity?
Good evening. Just going to get our friends in the back to get this up on the screen for us. So my name is Michael Merity. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Parking Supervisor and also the Supervisor of auxiliary services for the Police Department. This is Lieutenant Pinno. The two of us in conjunction, as well as the Chief, Christopher Flanagan, we work as a team in working with the USDA and doing the annual deer calling and Canadian geese management. So starting off with the whitetail deer management, starting at the beginning, in 2012, the township wanted to assess this issue with deer. They had a study conducted in partnering with the USDA. We had 101 deer per square mile and they estimated about 1,300 deer in the township. Police responded to 84 calls, as you can see, for deer killed by vehicles, as well as 67 other incidents related to deer. Just pulling up some statistics here, looking back from 2012 all the way up till today, you can see that we've, year by year, we've called approximately between 200 and 100 deer a year with the USDA, as well as varying numbers of deer with private hunters. As you can also see, the number of deer killed by motor vehicle and also deer, other deer-related calls, the incidents have reduced dramatically. Things went back up a little bit in the last couple of years, but not severely. That was mainly due to COVID, because of the fact that we did not have calling a year or two in that time period. So things kind of went back up because of reproduction and things like that. Moving on to deer density, there is, and when we started out, there was 101 deer per square mile. As of the last, just prior to the last calling, we were down to 48.5 deer per square mile. You can see we've gone as low as 14. The marks for the 19 and 21 R is, we just don't have any data for that. I apologize for that, not having that information. But 48.5 is still good and it would actually have been lower than that. We did not do a survey after the last calling, but if we did, it would show that we were somewhere in our mark, which I do have. Just bear with me for one second. We tried to, the township agreed that we wanted to be somewhere in the, I think it was 10 deer per, I'm sorry, 15 to 20 deer per square mile is the goal that the township had previously set back in 2012. So looking at deer incidents specifically, you can see 2010, 2011, and 2012, it was through the roof. And this past year, 2023, we had 32 vehicles or vehicle-related incidents with deer and 26 other. So we're still down. We're up, like I said, we're up a little bit from the previous years, but we're still in a pretty good place. Two pictures we have here, these are photos that were taken by members of our Police Department. One's a little bit older and one is from this past year of deer-related incidents that resulted in vehicle accidents. That's one of our major issues with deer is they get into vehicle strikes, causes a hazard to the community. Just some facts. In 2012, they removed, or since 2012, we've removed 1,882 deer from the township. We removed four in 2023 with private hunters outside of the USDA. The deer density, as I spoke to before, has dropped dramatically. The other thing I wanted to touch on that was pretty important, every deer in the township, this is extremely good, it's a very good thing, every deer that's removed from the township is processed and it is donated to a food bank. And since we've started, we've donated just about 6,800 pounds of deer meat. The recommendations from the USDA to continue to set goals for the amount of deer that we want to remove and then working with the USDA to do at least eight nights. We're hoping for 10 this year to do the process. We're also hoping to gain access to more private properties to be able to do that, just because it makes it easier, gives us more opportunity to get the deer. Where unfortunately, sometimes if a deer goes on a property, we don't have permission to operate on, we're not allowed to go onto that property. And then continuing to utilize sport hunting and bow hunting in addition to that to help reduce the population. The other piece I'll touch on real quick is the Canadian geese management. This is also part of the contracts of Canadian geese. The resident goose population is just over 200,000 birds and they can be observed in every county in Pennsylvania. There's approximately 1 million in the Atlantic Flyway. So they're very heavily populated on the East Coast. And then the resident goose population has expanded threefold from 1990 to 1999, so they're all over the place. Their, the two big issues with them is the health threat and the damages that they cause. Health threat, their fecal matter can unfortunately cause health risks. You can get E. coli, there's other sicknesses that you can obtain by becoming in contact with that. It also causes harm to the bodies of water and reduces water quality. And then also it's a slipping hazard and falling hazard. I'm sure many of you have been out in the parks and you've seen in times when the deer, or excuse me, the geese are out there and there's droppings everywhere, it becomes a slipping hazard. We don't want anybody to fall. The other thing is damage. It causes a lot of damage to the ground, to the concrete surfaces, playing fields. If you've got a football field or a baseball field and you get droppings on there, it totally destroys the surface. They also trample the grass and beat it up and it causes erosion issues and it just can be a real big headache. So a couple of things that they recommend and the activities that they'll do, they continue to want us to discourage feeding a waterfowl in the township. We actually do have signage in the Willows Park, I know, that says, please don't feed the waterfowl. Also, nesting egg treatment they do during seven to 10 intervals for eight weeks and then they'll collect and dispose of those eggs. Waterfowl harassment, they'll use different types of deterrents to try to chase off the waterfowl and trying to get them away so that they're not causing issues. And then they'll also do a roundup. They have a certain number that they're allowed to determine based on how many there are and they'll remove that number of geese and they'll be processed and also donated to a food bank. And then they're also available to assist us with any other issues we may have regarding the wild, or in regards to the geese. And that's all I have. Lieutenant Pinno has anything? Otherwise, we can take questions.
Yeah, so in the bill, it says that hunting, the culling is done at night. It's my understanding that hunting deer is illegal at nighttime in Pennsylvania. So how do we get this to come in accordance with the law, basically?
You are absolutely correct. I'm sorry.
Commissioner, you're absolutely correct. You cannot hunt at night. There's a dramatic and legal difference between culling deer and hunting deer. Hunting is a sport regulated by the Pennsylvania Game Commission. Culling is a license that the township applies for and receives through the Pennsylvania Game Commission. There are very few entities that are allowed to do culling legally in the Commonwealth. The largest and biggest of those groups is the Department of Wildlife Services underneath the USDA, yeah, USDA, Department of Wildlife Services. So you're correct.
That's where the Gaming Commission gives the-
Great. Gaming Commission gives them the permit to do it and we contract with them to have it done. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comment?
First, thank you for the data. I think it's great. Do we have any anticipated impact analysis for this year's program? I mean, we have really good look-back data. Do we have any sense of what this year's like culling will do to the population or anticipated outcomes as it relates to the project?
So just looking back, we have only failed to make our goal once. I will tell you this, if we get all the deer that we hope to get this year, we will not be back to our target goal. If you could look at the list again, we didn't, we reached-
Sorry, did I miss that?
No, no, no. We only got close to our goal one year. I think it was in 2018. And then the program stopped for a year and it built back up. We reduced the numbers of nights we did, so it builds back up. And what you have to remember is that it's kind of like a vacuum. If we reduce our deer herd, deer from the surrounding townships all come in. So I will tell you, we will get closer to our goal. I can't give you definitive numbers, but I can tell you with comments, we will not be at our goal where we think we should be. I would speculate at least another year or so before we get back down to the numbers where we want to be.
And then so this is just, this is just one year then that we're looking at for this versus maybe a multi-year agreement to get to the target?
That is correct. They only offer us a one-year deal, so that's the way we have to take it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just to touch on that a little bit more, so just one thing to think about. So there was 45 female deer, of the deer that were culled last year. If those deer were to continue to be in the population last year, they estimate there would have been another 79 deer produced based on that. So that's why doing it every year, it reduces the population down and prevents it from building up beyond the density that we're hoping to seek.
So the resolution says we're wishing to purchase. What are we purchasing?
So the, what it includes is we purchase the services of the USDA. It involves when they come down there, they bill us for nights that they spend in a hotel. I believe the processing fees are in there, or is that separate? Processing fees are in there. So what we have is we have a butcher from the lower end of Delaware County. He supplies us a refrigerated trailer where we store the animals after they're harvested throughout the night and then he comes in the morning, picks them up. He does all the processing, all the cleaning and all the distribution of the deer. So we're buying, to circle back, I apologize, your question, the services of the USDA, their lodging, their fees, and then bait, I'm sorry, we also have to bait the deer, that comes on us, and the butchering process and all that is all included in there. And there's also, the goose work is included in that, which would be the harassment and the stuff they do with the eggs and removing the geese as well.
Okay. Now, to go onto the topic of bow hunters, is it required as part of this agreement that there's a partnership with a private bow hunting group?
So the Game Commission, I want, I want to say request, but they make it obvious that it's more than a request, that we have to promote sport hunting as much as possible. So we do allow one specific group that comes into Radnor. They give us all their names of all their members. We do a license, not a driver's license, a hunting license check of them, make sure they're people. They tell us when they're coming, where they're going, and it allows us to regulate who comes into the township. There has never been a flavor to open the township to all hunters as a free-for-all, to be perfectly honest with you. So we're trying to meet that requirement as best we can. We also act as a go-between between property owners that want to have hunting done on their property, and it can be done safely because, like the Commissioner said earlier, these gentlemen are hunting and they're subject to all the rules and regulations of hunting in the Commonwealth. And if it can be done safely and legally on individual properties, we'll put them in contact with those people and then they'll go out and remove deer from those properties as well.
So do you have to be part of this, do you have to be part of the private club to gain access, or can individual bow hunters request and receive permission?
I can tell you that private, separate individuals have asked and have received permission in the past, but it's on a per-individual basis. And we usually pass that up to chain of command. It's a little above our pay grade. So, but we do have hunters that hunt. And the other thing is if it's private property, you don't need permission from the township. You need permission from the property owner. So what we regulate obviously is township property, parks and land owned by the township.
So let's go to the land owned by the township. If you receive a request from an individual bow hunter-
Yes.
They're not part of the private club?
Right. I would pass that up to chain of command. I would go through to Chief Linehan and Mr. White.
Okay. And what would that, what goes into that decision-making? So what would be, what would be the reason for refusing a request?
Well, they're going to be held to the same scrutiny as the private club, so with all the background checks and making sure that the Police Department that's overseeing the program in its entirety is satisfied with the individual and their records. And then from there, it's making, if there is a history of that individual hunting, making sure that the rules are followed and we don't have any incidents. Anyone, if any of those, if they don't check all those boxes, they are not allowed. And I think there's only been one, maybe two, in the four years that I've been participating, actually only three because we didn't call during COVID, but-
Yeah, there's one individual who-
It's very rare.
Yeah, there's one individual who comes to us every year. Originally, we were able to make him, not make him, I'm sorry, put him together with the original group that was working with us. He became a member of that group. That group has since moved on. We're using another group. We try to put the two together, let them work together with each other so the two guys don't show up at the same spot at the same time. And that usually works really well for us. But as Mr. White has said, there's not a lot of requests that come in.
And just to add to that quickly is, as the Lieutenant referred to a moment ago, what we want to avoid is kind of opening Pandora's box. We don't want a large group of people coming in to where it becomes a burden on the department to oversee or any threat or any possibility where we lose track of who's out doing what, where and when. That is the utmost priority for the entire program.
And just as a side, these private hunters, it doesn't cause the township anything. There's no fee related to using them and them helping us out. It's kind of like a quid pro quo. We're helping them, they're helping us.
And then is there, is there a way to limit the areas where you guys do the deer calling? So in particular, specific parks and neighborhoods?
So as far as township property, that we, Mr. White has the final say. Obviously, I guess you folks, the board would be able to tell him what he wants as well, but, and- and safety, as far as private property, I mean, I'm not going to lie to you and say if you tell us you don't want us to call in deer on Mary Smith's property, that we're going to tell you tougher going to do it. No, we would not do it. But, if it's safe and they want us to do it and it can be done, then, then we will do it. But, yeah, if there's a property that, that the township owns and you don't want us to use, I mean, we'll tell you why we want to use it and tell us not to use it and we won't. So, it's that simple.
But, but if you only do it eight nights, I mean, there are, there are more than eight properties where you guys would look to do deer culling, correct?
Yeah, I, I have been out of, actually going out with the guys for a couple of years now, but at, at the time, we had like almost 40-some properties and they were from the northern part of the township to the southern part of township, east and west.
Yeah, but are you hitting all 40 in a year?
In a night. When we go out hunting.
Oh, you're doing 40 in a night?
We'll, we'll drive through all of them. Yes, sir. At least probably, now, if it's a, if it's a busy night or a successful night, we might get through once. If it's a slow night, we might get through two or three times. So, but yeah, we, we, we have a route that we usually come up with and, and we hit them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, just like you and I and everybody else, we move throughout the day to deer the same exact way. They'll, they'll be in one spot and they'll move. And the other thing was going back to safety, these guys are really good. If they know that it's not a safe, safe procedure to shoot, they won't do it. So, if they move on, we'll move on and we'll go to the next site and then we'll circle back later if we have time that night. And if they're back in a safe place, then we'll, we'll go about our business.
Okay. Sorry, Maggie. The, at least I remember from the past, to be a private hunter going on private property, the private property had to be a certain acreage to do it.
So, I, I'm going to speak with confidence, but not 100% guarantee. If you're archery hunting, you have to be 100 yards from a permanent structure, except for, for example, if you wanted to hunt, allow hunting on your property, an archery hunter could be within 100 yards of your house, but they couldn't be within 100 yards of your neighbor's house. If I'm explaining that properly. And if it's rifle season, which you can't do and, well, they used to use shotgun hunting, but I don't think they ever did it for deer. It's 300 yards. Again, if it's safe, you could shoot from your back porch of your property, but you couldn't be within 300 yards of your neighbor's property. But, as far as you needing to have five acres or anything like that, I am unaware of any specific requirements for that. Yes, yes, sir.
I have a quick question. So, the bow hunting or archery hunting is done during the day?
Yes, ma'am. So, archery, our archers fall under Pennsylvania Game, Game Commission hunting regulations. They can hunt from dawn until dusk.
So, they're not related to the USDA?
No, no. Like I said, the USDA is culling. We're promoting archery hunters.
Got it. And then I have one quick question for Mr. White or Mr. Tate. Is this 70, almost 1,000 in line with other years?
It's consistent with prior years and also included in the police budget for 2024.
Great. You answered my next question. So, that's perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Any public participation on this issue? No? Okay. Let's have a vote on Resolution 2024-06. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Great presentation. We'll move on to Item C, Resolution 2024-09, authorizing Radnor Township Police Department to enter in a lease agreement with LensLock, a CoStar certified vendor for the purchase and maintenance of body worn cameras and in-car video systems in the amount of $65,624.80 per year for an initial term of five years. Can I have a motion?
Certainly.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Are you going to start us, officer?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Giancristoforo. I handle the technology needs for the police department, including IT, communications and hardware and software and things like that. I'm here tonight to present to you a proposal from a company by the name of LensLock to replace the existing body worn cameras that our officers have been wearing since late 2015, 2016. At that time, we purchased through a company called WatchGuard Vista Version 4 cameras, which were the latest, greatest back in 2015. And so far, they've served us well, but WatchGuard was bought out by Motorola two years ago and at that time, they started phasing out the Vista 4 cameras that we were using and a lot of police departments in Delaware County were using. They are now up to Vista 5 cameras and basically they have sundown them and they've end-of-life the cameras that we are using. Our cameras, we do not have the ability to get them fixed anymore. They break to the tune of one a month or two a month. So, we had to go out and search for a replacement for our cameras, both our in-car cameras and our body worn cameras. We have both in Radnor Township. So, we looked around at different companies. The biggest player, of course, is Axon. They are the leading supplier of cameras throughout the country, but they are the most expensive. We shopped around, myself and Kevin Gallagher, who also is an administrative person for the police department. We were at a conference for Cody, which is our software vendor for RMS system, and we ran into a company by the name of LensLock who was there displaying their wares. We, they took us to a demonstration. We really liked them. We talked at length with them about their warranty, their durability, their interaction between the car cameras and the body cameras, and we liked their product. So, we asked them to allow us to demo them and for the past three months or four months, we have been demoing six of their cameras. Their prices are much less than the leading camera vendors out there. They are not a big player on the East Coast of the United States. They're a big player on the West Coast, California, and in the middle of the country, they're looking to make inroads to the East Coast. So, we are a good candidate for them to get their feet wet here on the East Coast of the United States. We asked them to lend us some cameras to use, to try them, because frankly, our cameras that our traffic safety guys were using had to be put into use for patrol because we couldn't get them fixed anymore. So, they graciously lent us six cameras that we, like I say, we've used for the past three months. The proposal that you have, that we're proposing tonight is for them to supply us with 52 body cameras, three mounts each per officer, depending on what type of outer garment that they're wearing, 20 in-car cameras, and 60-month guarantee with replacement cameras 30 years into the lease. So, we would have a five-year lease for that 65, 624, 80, which is a budgeted item and it's right exactly on the number of the budget. And we would have those cameras replaced with brand-new models if they have a new model or the same model, if they don't come out with a new model after 30 months. They're also going to provide us with unlimited cloud storage for our videos with LensLock and also our videos that we have stored currently on our township's WatchGuard server. WatchGuard that we have right now is a server-based system in the township so that all that video is stored here in the township servers. We, they have offered to allow us to migrate all our existing WatchGuard videos that we've archived over the years up to the LensLock cloud so that we can virtually eliminate the WatchGuard server, which is going to be a huge savings to the township as far as equipment and licenses and things like that. So, they're looking to giving us unlimited cloud storage for the full five years and also 24/7/365 support. So, we looked at Axon. Their price was almost double of what this one is. We tried to get a quote from WatchGuard, who has since become Motorola. We never even got a response from them. So, we really feel that this is the way to go. This is going to give us the best bang for the buck. They're going to send their own people down to install the cameras in the vehicles. So, we feel that it's a very viable solution to replace our cameras, which are end-of-life and they're dying quickly. So, we'd really like to see this go through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any commissioner question?
I have.
I have several.
Yes.
So, could you explain to me how these work?
Okay.
Sure.
When an officer comes.
So, the officer's wearing them.
Yes. When an officer comes on duty, he goes to, we're going to have two, right now, we have charging stations downstairs in the police station where each officer is assigned a camera. Okay? So, he takes his camera out of the dock and puts it on his chest. Now, they can wear them either on a vest or if it's a plainclothes officer, he can wear it down here on his belt. And then what they do is that when they go out on the street, if they, the camera is not recording all the time. The camera records 30 seconds ahead of time, just in case, so they don't miss anything, but it doesn't really begin to record and actually say it's recording until they push the button on the camera. So, the camera records and then during their shift, they're recording all the time. When they come back off shift, they drop it into a dock.
The recording.
Police instance.
Just video or?
Video and audio.
So, they're constantly.
Yes.
Recording audio. So, when they're in the car, they're recording, recording audio?
Yes. When they're in the car, the cars, the car cameras are coordinated with the, with the body cams.
Right.
So, if you're seeing an officer in a vehicle, you'll actually see the body cam and also the shot from the car cam. Also, the same thing. Yes.
So, when the officer gets a phone call from his or her spouse?
They can turn, they can turn it off.
They can turn it off then?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm worried about the reasonable expectation of privacy.
If they go to the men's room or the ladies' room or something like that, they can turn the camera off. Yes.
So, you're guarding against or protecting their reasonable expectation of privacy?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then, when they get out of the car, they have to turn it on though to record?
Not turn it on. They just have to hit a button and it beeps twice. If you watch any like a police show like Cops or things like that, you'll hear that beep, 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 beep. What that is, is while that camera's recording, it's advising the officer that it is recording by buzzing twice. And even if the officer, if it's a noisy situation or in a fight or something like that, they'll feel the vibration through their vest and they'll be able to tell that the camera is working and recording. So, yes. So, what happens is when they come back off shift, they drop it into the dock. The dock sends it up to the cloud and then it's instantly reviewable by staff, administration.
Right. So, in my short-term memory, which isn't fabulous.
Yes.
Just do that one more, if you don't mind. So, they, they go, they put it on.
Yes.
It starts recording.
Lasts for 12 hours.
Starts recording video and audio.
Can I just make one, just one statement? It is in a pre-record feature. However, if you spend eight hours in the car.
Yep.
And nothing happened and you, you put it back in the docking station, it wouldn't have eight hours of nothing on there. So, it is pre-recording if you turn on the lights on the car or there's an occurrence where the officer manually activates it, it will pick up that pre-record time and the incident from that time. If they're just buzzing around in the car, it is recording, but it's in a pre-record, but it's not like when you activate it and you have an hour conversation with a resident, that would be recorded and saved. So, your day's events, if you didn't activate it, like you went into the Wawa or you used the bathroom, it would not be recorded at that particular time. I think that's what you're asking.
But, I'm asking like if a citizen goes up to talk to an officer, whether the officer's in the car or on the street, that will be recorded?
They would turn it on, yes.
So, they have to turn it on for it to be recorded?
Correct. They would activate it. And, and I don't want to get so technical. It is always on, ready to have an occurrence or in a pre-record mind, but to capture that conversation, they would activate their body camera.
Is there any reason they wouldn't activate it?
There, the policy is written that any of our interactions, if somebody won't talk to us, then the officer will have to articulate or have that video where they say, I don't want you to, to record me and we would go from there. So, the officer, there is a provision in our very specific directive on body camera usage that you could turn it off. But, we, I can, I can say that just for this year, without looking back every year, this year's budget's just started. For 2023, we had no occurrences where they had to document that they had to turn their camera off. If you do turn your camera off, you have to document it and notify your supervisor that that occurred and then there were, we would evaluate that particular circumstance. In last year, 2023, we didn't have any of those.
What I'm saying is as soon as someone comes up to you, you turn it on?
Yes.
Yeah.
No exceptions, right?
I mean, if, if, if they ask you where the Wawa is, we don't activate it. If it's police-related something, we would, we would turn it on. Like if they're like, hey, where's the Wawa? So, go up here. That wouldn't be recorded. If they have any type of interaction of a police problem or reviewing an incident, then the body camera would be activated.
So, they have to hear what it is you're asking first before they turn it on?
In a one-on-one situation, in the same breath of I respond to an accident and I'm working an accident scene, it would be on if another person from the public walks up and says, this just happened at the house down the street. That would be captured on, on the recording. So, so there's, this thing does so much and there's so many dynamics to what we do that once it's activated, you could pick up on other conversations based on somebody coming up and interacting with you. I think I, I'm trying to answer your question. I hope I am.
Thank you.
I apologize. I should have asked this question earlier, but we had snow days and I was taking care of kids last week. Have you run the contract and this particular camera by the DA's office?
Yes, it is acceptable. It, it, not the DA's, we've already sent some videos to the DA's office that were made on this camera, but these cameras have to be actually approved by the Pennsylvania State Police and we do have their approval to use them. Yes.
That's awesome. My question's specific, though. I'm, I'm looking to find out whether the DA's office knows both about these cameras in particular and the mechanics of how the files are being stored.
Okay. So, here's how it works. LensLock and WatchGuard both, right now, when we have a particular clip of a video that needs to go to the DA's office, the DA's office is not actually connecting to us. They connect into WatchGuard's cloud or they would connect into LensLock's cloud. And then what would happen is that our compliance officer, Sergeant St. Anson, would send them a link to just that particular video to the DA. The DA would then click on that link, put the password in that Sergeant St. Anson sends them, and then they would be able to view or download that video.
Understood. I don't understand the mechanics of how the files are being uploaded or the security that's on the server. Just because we haven't had that conversation, it's not really germane to our conversation. I can imagine that that could have evidentiary impact, which is why I'm asking. Has the DA's office been able to review the specifics of the contract and all the sort of backend stuff and said that they're okay with it?
Yes, they are.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, just to pick up on, on one of your comments, was this put out to bid?
We actually looked, we, we tried to get three bids. The three, the big three players are Axon, Motorola and these guys. Motorola would not give us a bid for some reason. Axon's bid was double the price of this and these are, they are CoStar's vendors. So, they provided us with a product that was the most suited for our needs.
And Bill, apologies if I missed this. Did we approve going out to bid on this?
Well, it's included in the budget. So, that was part of our capital discussion there. This, when items like this are, are part of a cooperative like CoStars, we are not actually putting a bid out. Radnor Township is not actually putting a bid out. We are instead grabbing the pricing off of whatever cooperative did the, did the bidding. So, we don't, on, on these circumstances, we don't come to the board and ask to go out to bid because we're not bidding. We're purchasing off someone else's bid.
Can you explain that? I don't, I'm not following.
Yeah. So, for example, if we were to replace a, a piece of playground equipment that was available on a CoStars, by a CoStars vendor, we wouldn't come to the board and ask for permission to go to CoStars to, to buy that. We would just come to the board and say, it's on CoStars. Can we have permission to buy it? The only time that we're coming to the board and asking for permission to go to bid are for items that aren't on a CoStars or some other cooperative purchasing agreement where we have to solicit for the, for bidders. Those are the ones that we come to the board.
Okay. Okay. Understood. My other concern is that you said all of the major players using this particular camera are on the West Coast.
Yes.
In my experience, that means all the resources are on the West Coast.
No, they, they've, they've located a, a branch in New Jersey and they also have a branch now in Florida. So, our, our folks that came here and delivered our cameras at all are from New Jersey.
So, when you say a branch, what?
They're, they have a, an office, an office, a facility in New Jersey now.
And would they do repairs at that office?
Yes. They're willing to even give us five spare cameras for spares.
Okay. And 24/7 service?
Yes.
Where, where are their service locations?
New Jersey is the closest one to us. But, but they'll overnight us a camera. So, we're going to have five spares. So, if we have a, a broken camera. So if we have a broken camera or one of them gets run over with a car or something like that, we would then put a spare in, we would have five spares, we would then put that camera right back in service with a spare and send the old one back.
Okay, and so there, and so just to go back to your first, the first question, so there's only three vendors?
Three, three major players in the camera market, yes.
Okay, and we received bids from two?
Bids from two, one never, but never. After multiple requests, we couldn't get anything from them.
Okay, and how, how long has LensLock been around?
It's been around, I'm going to say, eight or nine years.
Okay, and, I mean, eight or nine years isn't a long, it's not a long time to be in service.
But we, we looked thoroughly at their product, and we've road tested their product for the last three months, and it's been outstanding so far.
Police just also haven't been wearing body cams for that long. You're not going to find a body cam company that's been around since the 1940s.
No, but companies like, you know, they, they evolve, and so they go in from one type of camera to another, so, but LensLock is a brand-new company, eight years.
Eight years.
But the ones we're replacing were from 2015 to 2016.
2015, yes.
So that is eight years.
That's what they, that's when they were new, yes.
Okay, no, I appreciate it, thanks.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One, so a slightly different take on the tenure of the company, right? I'm in innovation, so early-stage companies too, and we have a tendency to get acquired. So you had the situation with WatchGuard getting acquired by Motorola.
Motorola, yes.
And now these cameras are being phased out, and we're kind of going through this process again, right? The likelihood of a company like this doing as well as they are to be acquired is probably, in my experience, pretty high. Do we have any concerns about the five years, I guess, that we have service? Is there any guarantee that we have these in service for at least the five-year contract? And, and, you know, I guess around the video storage and, you know, maintenance and whatnot, should they be exited, right? Do we have any guarantees that we'd be able to use these for the guaranteed five-year contract?
Well, we have a legal contract saying that they must provide the service, so, you know, that's, that's what we have to stand on.
Yeah, I got it.
But...
Nobody's. And then the second question is, with regards to, you're working with them to take the video that's currently on the WatchGuard system and transfer it, correct?
Yes, yes.
And I'm assuming that they meet all the security requirements for data, not just the management, but also data transfer?
It does, yes, they do.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Any other commissioner comment?
I have one question. Is it your sense that we're getting a deal because they want to break into the east coast? Is that the... Which would be a good thing, I'm not against that, that's a good thing.
Speaking honestly, we're, Radnor is a...
No, no, lie to us, no, yes, please.
Radnor is a, Radnor is a large police department in Delaware County, and I think it would be a feather in their cap to have their product here. And I think they would be proud to, to have Radnor use their product. So, so the answer is yes, I think that, yep.
Any public participation on this topic? Seeing none, let's take a vote on Resolution 2024-09. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. On to Item D. Resolution 2024-13, Authorization of the Payment of Change Orders Numbers 3, 4, and 5 to RoadCon Incorporated for the Pipe and Inlet Construction and the Excavation and Backfill for the Undercuts on King of Prussia Road, for the King of Prussia Road and Eagle Road Intersection Improvement Project, in the total amount of $45,948, to be funded from the proceeds of the 2019 General Obligation Bond. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, I assume Mr. Norsini, this is you?
Yes, ma'am. So you read it well, there was unsuitable soil in the lane widening that occurred on Eagle and King of Prussia. These were unforeseen to happen on the project, as well as we found a pipe under the road that wasn't supposed to be there, so we connected it to our system. So all told, for this project, we are currently at about $76,000 out of a $288,000 contingency, so we're, we're fine in that respect.
Thank you, and it's a wonderful construction project, I have to say. Any commissioner comment, other than mine?
Two quick questions for you. The second one's going to be rhetorical, I'll just say in advance. Is Cabrini still up to assist us with this, or is Villanova assisting them in their participation?
We, we've notified them both. I made sure to notify Villanova immediately when we heard, as we're confident that we'll get our share from, in one, from one entity or the other.
And then the second, like, there's sinkholes that have demolished that area so many times, like, how did we not know that the soil wasn't going to be suitable?
So actually, where the sinkholes were, was not the bad soil, it was closer...
That's because that's been fixed.
Yeah, that was closer east on that lane widening that butts up to Eastern. Basically, that whole lane was unsuitable, as well as the approach lane on Eagle. So they were the worst of it. Actually, in the area you were talking about, it was very localized, it was very minimal. Go figure.
There you go, thank you.
I have a question. That pipe that was discovered and that it was hooked up, what kind of pipe was, was that a stormwater, what was the...
I'm sorry, yes, so it was a small diameter stormwater pipe.
What, when you say small diameter, what's that mean?
Eight inches.
Eight inches and, okay.
Correct, and so when we were excavating for other things in the road, we came across it, determined what it was, it wasn't shown on any markout or plan, but we knew we had to do something with it, so we had to connect it to our, to one of our pipes.
And that water goes where? Pipe that goes where?
So it's connected to all the new pipes that we installed and eventually go down to, if you look at the sign for Eastern University, that's the outfall for the project, which was the original outfall, there's a creek there.
So since it's a small pipe, does that create any problems? If it's, you know, going into a bigger pipe and all that?
No.
No?
No.
All my years of engineering, zero. I'll take your word for it, okay?
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on Resolution 2024-13. All in favor?
Aye.
Item E. Resolution 2024-15, Authorization of the Payment of Change Orders Number 1, 2, and 3 to Miko Constructors Incorporated for relocation of the sanitary lateral, the disposal of concrete blocks, and the disposal of residual waste for the South Devon Area Flood Reduction and West Wayne Preserve Wooded Wetlands Restoration and Habitat Enhancement Project, in the total amount of $136,930, to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Norsini, again.
Thank you, commissioner. So this might get a little confusing. So on this project, we knew we had 4,500 cubic yards of soil that was contaminated, that would have to be hauled off-site to a special place. From the time we did our original design till now, the regulations have changed. So the good thing is, that doesn't, that soil is not considered contaminated. On the flip side, in what was supposed to be clean fill, we found lead. So, and this was the contractor who's required to test the fill for whatever facility they take it to. So this was, again, nothing we thought we would encounter. So the lead-contaminated soil is considerably more expensive to take to a site than the previous soil. So what you have here tonight is the cost to haul the lead-contaminated soil to a very specific site in Pennsylvania. What's called the concrete block in the West Wayne Preserve, the contractor pulled up massive footings from like eight feet deep. They were, they were huge. I don't, we don't know what they're from, and we had to pay to get rid of them. And then the, the final one was in that same area, so we had the concrete blocks, and then on the Friends of the Radnor Trail Park, the lateral from our restroom was very close to the stormwater management system that's been excavated. So we had to move that over, so we don't, A, we don't want to damage it when we dig, and B, it's not good to have a stormwater facility right next to a sanitary sewer lateral. So that's, that's where we are at this point, and that project is still ongoing. We are at approximately $137,000 in used contingency out of $483,000.
Thank you. Any commissioner comment or question?
Steve, Steve, how is, you know, what, what are your thoughts on the project? How's it running so far? Are we on schedule? And, you know, what is the anticipated deadline?
So we're actually, originally, the contract was going to be a linear contract where first, I guess we could call it phase one and phase two. Phase one being West Wayne Preserve, phase two being Fort or Friends of the Radnor Trail. But the contractor contacted us and said, "Hey, I have resources available." So instead of being linear, those two things are running concurrently. And they've been working in some pretty, pretty poor weather, so they're not wallflowers by any means, so I've been very happy to see that. If all goes well, the entire project would be done mid-June, as opposed to July, August.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions? Public participation on this issue? Seeing none, let's have a vote on Resolution 2024-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Item F. Resolution 2024-16, Authorization of the Payment of Change Orders Number 3 and 4 to AJ Juric Incorporated for the Additional SOD and Quantity Adjustments for the North Wayne Tree Trench Project, in the total amount of $20,668, to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, commissioner. So the tree, tree trench project has been completed for some time. The vast majority of this amount was for sod. We originally had gone with seed and hay mulch, but after speaking with residents and looking at the project, this was the way to go, and we know that for any future projects, we will just build this in, into the project. So for the tree trench project, we ended up with approximately $36,000 in contingency out of $127,000 contingency budget. So we did fine on that one.
Thank you. Any commissioner questions or comments?
Yeah, sorry, a comment on the tree trench, and they look good. The, I did notice that there's leaves that occasionally get stuck on top of the things, and I saw some neighbors, like, scraping those away, because you kind of need to do that, otherwise it won't go down in there. I don't know if, if other neighbors have been told, or, or the township or whoever.
So we, as part of this, we, we will maintain the systems. If somebody had an issue with that, they could give us a call. But really, it's no different than, so there are tree trenches, but they're part of your lawn again, right? There was lawn and sidewalk there previously, and now there's lawn and sidewalk again. So as your contractor comes and cleans your lawn, the hope would be he would clean that area just like they did previously.
So there's no specific inlet or anything, right? It's just...
We, there are small, small diameter inlets there, so the project is really, there's three components to the project. There's the evapotranspiration we get by the trees, there's the soil supplements that are used, so we get really good drainage into the system, and then every X feet, there is a small drain.
And that's what you meant?
Got it, thank you. All right, any further commissioner questions, comments? Public comment? All right, let's take a vote on Resolution 2024-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, that finishes our formal agenda. Let's see if there are any reports from board liaisons. No. I have one little thing I just want to say. Following the Board of Health meeting on January 16th, there was an excellent presentation on opioid abuse and the opioid crisis in general. It was recorded by Ian, you can get it on YouTube, but it's well worth the watch. Savage Sisters came out and did the presentation here, they had free Narcan for anyone who wanted it. You know, it was, it was really quite done, they had a little dummy you could practice, and, and it was, it was well done. Thanks to Alex Yonopoulos, who, from the Board of Health, who organized all of that, and Savage Sisters as well. Anybody else? Any new business? Old business? I just want to make one more pitch for the comprehensive plan, though the four people I'm pitching to have probably long done the survey, but for anyone out there watching, there are only a couple more weeks unless we stretch it out a little bit to complete this survey for the comprehensive plan. So please do so, that would be great. Any other old business? Any final public participation? All right, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.